You will stay with us and be with us whether you're presenting or not, or just here, and everyone that is online. I want to mention that we're going to enter into executive session now to receive legal advice regarding the state of education emergency declaration of Jasper County School District. Do I have a second?
I second Richardson.
Okay. All right. Second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise. Okay. Stand in executive session. See what the state board, your state Board of Education does, so we want to appreciate you being here. And at this time, I'd like to call on Dr. David Mathis, our vice chair, to do a pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Have a full agenda today, and we want to welcome those people who are online with us today too, as well as all of you that are here. At this time, we'll have approval of our State Board of Education minutes for June the 3rd, 2025, and our special call meeting for July the 18th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Yes. And a second.
Johnson, second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise. We will now have approval of our State Board of Education agenda for today, August the 5th, 2025. Is there any objection to approving the agenda as presented? Hearing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Want to talk to you a little bit and share a little bit with you today because it is the beginning of our new school year. And you know, when you think about our new school year, you think about the emotions that are going on right now, often the excitement that we have, the anticipation, and perhaps there's a little bit of nervousness out there, no matter from whom it is coming. New classes, new teachers, and the potential of new friendships and experiences. And I would think that the anticipation is looking forward to learning new things and discovering new interests. Nervousness, well, possibly about the unknown, the new teachers, the new classmates, or the challenging coursework that might be ahead of them. And then there's hope. I like that word. A belief that this year will be better than the last with opportunities for personal growth and success. And then comes the motivation, a desire to learn, achieve academic goals, and make the most of the school year. And you know, for our teachers that are out there, I think that they probably are reflecting a little bit right now. Getting, thinking about the past year and what worked well and what should be improved upon. And then their preparation, getting the classroom ready. I always love that. I love to look at the pictures of what each and every teacher is doing in preparing their classroom, planning their lessons, and setting the stage for a successful year. They're filled with inspiration. They have to be. Looking forward to connecting with their students and fostering a love of learning. And then the optimism kicks in. But they're believing in the potential of each of our students and the power of education to change those lives that are coming before them. You know, Richard W. Reilly, who was our U.S. Secretary of Education, said, and I love this, "Teaching is the one profession that makes all other professions possible." Think about that. Just think how that does. And then Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." So today, from this board, we just want to send blessings out to every student out there that's anticipating, every teacher that's just a little nervous about going in the classroom, every administrator, every staff, every bus driver, and every custodian, and most of all, to those parents who are sending those students to learn all that they can and feel. And we want to make sure that we wish them the best in beginning this new school year. And Superintendent, I know that you're feeling the same way about all of that, watching our schools open up and beginning our time together.
Wonderful. Well, it has been a great start to the school year. I've already been able to be in three districts for a first day of school. And so we were in Marlboro last week, and then was in Lee and Kershaw just yesterday. So really excited for the great start to the school year that I've been able to see all across the state already. I know we have a lot of business to do today, so I'm going to keep my report fairly short. Is my deck loaded? He's getting it pulled up here. Well, while he is doing that, I want to go ahead and first start by acknowledging a very, very special guest that we have with us here today. Each morning, I wake up with a really deep sense of gratitude and purpose, knowing that I have the privilege of working alongside South Carolina's most passionate and committed educators. From our S C D E headquarters here to every classroom across every district, our dedicated South Carolina teachers are united in a shared mission to shape brighter futures for every child in our state. And today, we have with us Kaylee George, who is a shining example of that mission in action. And I would invite her to stand so that I can publicly embarrass her as I read about her.[438.12][438.12](APPLAUSE). A proud graduate of Presbyterian College and the University of South Carolina, where she earned her Master of Education in Teaching, Kaylee brings both heart and expertise to her role as lead interventionist at Forest Lake Elementary right here in Columbia. And I'm going to make a little side note of personal privilege, our very own Henry Gunter is an alum of Forest Lake Elementary School.[464.28][464.28](LAUGHTER). So we know that they turn out great students. Her work, though, is not confined to the walls of her school. It ripples outward, touching lives across the state. Because Kaylee is a teacher of teachers, she equips her colleagues with tools that work, grounded and structured literacy, driven by data, and personalized for every learner. Her leadership in organizing data meetings, hosting family literacy nights, and leading parent university sessions demonstrate her unwavering commitment to student success and family engagement. And earlier this year, Kaylee was actually honored to become a Milken educator, often called the Oscars of teaching. This prestigious national recognition celebrates her innovation, her excellence, and her impact. And if you had my slide presentation, you would see her standing there with a $25,000 check, which is a very exciting part of this award, but there's also incredible professional learning opportunities as a Milken educator that go not just this year, but really throughout her entire education career. And so we are so excited to welcome her today, and it is a distinct honor to be able to present to her this award that exemplifies what's possible when passion meets purpose. So ladies and gentlemen, I present the official Milken Educator Award to Kaylee George.[553.91][553.91](APPLAUSE).
Where's the photographer?
And I'd love to invite her to address the board.
Please do. Congratulations to you, young lady. We are proud of you and all that you have done, and just welcome you to our board.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Superintendent Weaver and members of the South Carolina State Board of Education. Thank you for honoring me and recognizing my work through the Milken Educator Award. I am truly humbled and grateful. I would like to thank the Milken Family Foundation for celebrating educators who make a lasting impact on the profession. I will never forget the life-changing surprise on February 20th, when I received the award and $25,000 in front of my students and coworkers. What I did not realize in that moment was this award was going to provide me access to an incredible network of Milken educators who use the power of the pen to celebrate, elevate, and activate the teaching profession. I am proud to be a part of this incredible network. As a reading interventionist and South Carolina Milken Award recipient, I am guided by M T S S Specialist and Consultant Dr. Stephanie Stoller's powerful reminder, "We know too much to be failing so many." My mission and passion as an educator is to improve literacy outcomes for all students. We can do this by implementing evidence-based practices. If we build the capacity of our educators, then high achievement is possible for every student. Based on our 2024 S C Ready data, roughly half of our third grade students in South Carolina did not meet grade level expectations, reading expectations. We have a responsibility to improve reading instruction for all students. Every child needs an educator who can diagnose their needs as a reader and immediately implement evidence-based practices to meet those needs. Educators are a powerful force for literacy improvement. All students need to be a part of a system that develops a pathway for success. Thank you again for this tremendous honor and for taking the time to recognize this special moment.
Thank you, Kaylee.
Thank you.[686.38][686.38](APPLAUSE).
And so now you have no question as to why she is one of the most wonderful Milken educators we could have nominated here in South Carolina. Oh, no, my slides just went away again.[700.32][700.32](LAUGHTER). Just as we're getting ready to transition. Well, hopefully, we'll get them back here in just a second. But just real quickly, I wanted to give you all a status update of, hopefully, the system is not shutting down. Hopefully, give you a status update about the action that was taken at this last board meeting relative to the financial takeover of the Marlboro County School District. So as I mentioned, I actually had the opportunity to be in Marlboro for the first day of school a week ago, Monday. And if y'all can advance my slides to the third slide in the deck, there we go, I wanted to just give you a quick glance at that day by the numbers. So we had one South Carolina Department of Education delivery crew that rode a school bus to each of the eight schools within that district. And on that bus, we were able to deliver over 350 bags of teacher appreciation supplies to the teachers in the district. And then we also had a big box that we were able to present to each school that was full of supplies. And those supplies were generously donated by staff here at the Department of Education, as well as the generous support of Colonial Life and Heart for Schools, which is a local ministry here in Columbia. So we were incredibly grateful for that, and that resulted in just over 3,300 Marlboro students who are ready for a fantastic new school year there in Marlboro County. But we just felt like it was so important for us to kick the school year off on a high note and to let those teachers and the community know that they are loved, that they are appreciated, and that we believe, as you said, Kaylee, in the potential of every single student, whether in Marlboro County or anywhere else here in the state of South Carolina. And I wanted to especially call out for attention Clio Elementary School. I had such a wonderful time visiting there, and what was so incredibly moving about Clio is how the community itself rallied to get that school ready for the first day. As you all know, there had been talk about Clio potentially being shuttered this school year, and so it really did take the entire village to get this school up and ready for the new school year. But we had people volunteering on the grounds crew, we had people working within the school to ensure that it was ready. It was truly a community effort. And so to conclude my report today, I want you to see just a very brief video about some of the community engagement that happened in Clio. All right, y'all, it sounds like the sound may not be up. I'm going to go back a slide, and give me the hi sign when the sound is ready. All right, we'll try this one more time. Okay, sound is still not working. Well, if we aren't able to play it now because we have so much on the agenda, just take my word for it. Okay, here we go.
Here we go.
Nope, still no sound, y'all.
That just shows that people are not out.
Yes.[908.12][908.12](LAUGHTER). That's exactly right. Well, you'll be able to see, even if we watch it really quickly without the sound, we have the mayor of Clio there, who was there with us for the first day, just talking about how much it meant to be able to showcase Clio to the rest of the state on this first day of school. And our wonderful principal, Joy Rankin. And then this is a local pastor, Gregory Woods. And what he is saying is that his daddy actually went to school at that school, and so he stepped up to provide lawn care services to get the school ready. Some of our wonderful food service workers, one of our incredible teachers there, and lots of bright smiling faces. So we'll send that to you with sound.
That is great.
You can just imagine how wonderful it would be if we actually had sound to go along with it. So Madam Chair, with that, I'll turn the gavel back over.
That is great.[967.54][967.54](APPLAUSE). We're so grateful. That is great, and knowing that those young people are well on their way to a great year of education, and very dedicated teachers and town, the community and all, that's great. Thank you. Well, we have a parliamentarian comment now, and we do this with a little sadness now because our John Tyler is going to be moving on. He's going into the judicial system, and we're going to miss him greatly here, but we are so thankful that you're going to be there, where you are going to be implementing and making sure that the laws of this state do. You've been great, just great. It's been wonderful to have you sitting to my left and punching me a couple of times along the way.[1025.38][1025.38](LAUGHTER). You've done a great job, and really appreciate everything you've been, John Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you would indulge me for a moment, I'm going to stray from the normal minutia of Robert's Rules of Order. It is related to the role of parliamentarian, but bear with me a moment.
I will.
As a recovering trial lawyer shares an illustration. Recently, I built a roof over our patio for my wife's birthday. It was far more involved than I wanted it to be, and involved far more trips and money spent at Lowe's than I ever anticipated it could. During the process, I learned that I'm great at driving fasteners with my right hand through metal and wood, but not so great at it with my left hand. The problem is, is that it was too much work for my right hand. And in the heat and fatigue set in, and not having enough coverage from the sun, hence the need for a roof, I began to use my left hand to support the work of my right hand. And I found that my left hand had the strength that was able to steady and provide significant support for the important work that my right hand was doing. Now, Robert's Rules does not define the role of parliamentarian in this way, but I've learned that the role of parliamentarian is to be the left hand of a right-handed carpenter, to provide strength and support for that which the right hand is attempting to accomplish. You all are an extremely healthy board, and you all are here for the right reasons. I have had conversations with all of you about that at some point, and you're here to make sure that our children receive the best education from the best teachers possible. And Madam Chair, it has been a great honor to serve as this board's parliamentarian, to be the left-handed support to the right-handed work that you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.[1160.14][1160.14](APPLAUSE). That's a hug from our board, because you have been, you have been a wonderful friend, and you've been a wonderful parliamentarian, and we're going to miss you greatly, but we are so happy that the state of South Carolina will continue to get your caring and your expertise. So now we go back to work.
All right.
Okay.[1199.08][1199.08](LAUGHTER). Follow the agenda. Right now, we're going to move into our public comment section, and I would like to tell you that ordinarily, we do a five-minute, and since we only have six people that are appearing before us today, those five minutes will certainly be beneficial to each of you. We want to thank you for being with us today. We want to ask that you speak directly into the microphone with your name so that that will be recorded into our minutes. And I think the first person up is Tom Beletti and Joyce Gerald. Are you all a tag team group here?
No.
No, no, but y'all are together, and you're both from Jasper County School Board, correct?
Correct.
Well, Tom and Joyce, it's nice to have you with us today.
Nice to meet you.
Superintendent Weaver, members of the Board of Education, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Dr. Ballewett. I'm one of the Jasper County School District Board members. I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the board. Personally, I'm in a quandary. I was an educator, school district administrator in Wisconsin for 40 years. I've been on the Jasper County School District Board for two and a half years. I've been on many and led many boards. The Jasper County School District Board has been one of the most dysfunctional I've ever experienced. It has had that reputation for many, many years. If you can see by the way we're seated, we're not a unified board. We're all over this place. Many of my constituents say, 12 superintendents in 20 years, low-performing students. Get rid of the board. Start over. Three of our board members have been on Facebook recently, either they or their families, saying, "Let's disband at least part of the board." That's part of the problem that we're having. But I'm a fighter. I don't give up. I got on this board to help children get the education they deserve and to try to help the board become less dysfunctional. Despite high poverty, 95% minority, and the highest percent of ESL students in the state, our scores are going up. Teaching and learning are happening. We've tripled the percent of kids who are in the atth or above grade level last year alone. Problem is the summer drop, which happens with minority and poor students. The other problem we have is 70% of our kids, just like pretty much the rest of the state, cannot pass the kindergarten readiness test. That's not a problem just for us. It's a problem in the state. Most of our recent troubles happened between 2018 and 2022. You've read the reports. That's before my time on the board. We trusted the superintendent and CFO to give us accurate information. They did not. Despite all of those investigations, our superintendent has still not been found guilty of anything. There are allegations. We can't operate on allegations alone. Now, the superintendent is gone, the CFO is gone, the previous board leadership is gone. Since January and under new leadership, we have a new CFO. We spent five months doing a national search and have a name for a superintendent that we would like to bring forward. We're addressing the recommendations from the SIG report, but three of them are for you. Seven of them were for the SIG. Six are for attorneys, four of which are for contract language. That leaves five for us in policy changes. We have a meeting next week where we're going to start that process. And there are two others for the board, and those will be on our agenda. So I don't know what you guys mean by taking over a district. I know some of them in our area that we've seen, I'm not sure you've been really successful with those. But as I see it, you have probably four choices, maybe your attorneys give you more. One, leave us be. There's way too much political pressure for that to happen. A second choice, disband the entire board, start all over, but you lose the elected representation that is on this board. You lose the learning, there's a tremendous learning curve, you lose the history, you lose some of the leadership that we've had. Another choice, allow the board to operate under direct intensive supervision. If you've been involved in supervision, you know what that means, at all meetings, including executive board, executive meetings. Another choice I see as kind of a hybrid, where you disband part of the board and allow the current leadership to continue. In a year, all the leadership, current leadership will be up for reelection. We're not planning to run again. You disband part of the board, in a year, you'll have a whole new board. You'll have some of the transition, you'll have some of the leadership that's going on. You'll allow us to have the progress that we've already planned for and made to happen. And you'd allow us to hire the superintendent that we would like to put forward for our new superintendent. Thank you for your attention. Ballewett. Ballewett is the name. Thank you.
Since we are hearing your comments for the first time, it's our policy to the table, comments as information, and if we have any further questions or need additional stuff, we'll certainly be in touch with you. Thank you so much. Our next presenter is Priscilla Fraser. Welcome, Ms. Fraser. About Jasper County School District.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, State Superintendent Ellen Weaver and the State Board of Education. I stand before you today to say that some board members tried to do their judiciary duties. We reached out to several delegation, and we also reached out to the superintendent's Ellen Weaver office. We sent a letter to Tom Davis asking for help in getting a forensic audit to go through with the Jasper County School Board. It had been placed on the school board, not on the agenda, but board members has asked for or made a motion for forensic audit to be done, shot down probably three or four times, 5-4. So then we reached out to Senator Tom Davis, reached out to Representative Bill Hager, met with him, gave him a whole folder, envelope of information, why we would need this forensic audit. To that prevail, we had no response from anyone. I gave, we also reached out to Ellen Weaver's office on several occasions, asking for a meeting to set up with her to, in order to get a forensic audit done. We started back in October of '23, asking for help. We went all the way to January 5th, January 17th, January 29th. We still had no response from anyone. So it's not that some of the board members didn't reach out for help in this situation. We did. We were calling for help because we were desperate. I think that I actually sent a copy of the letter to Ms. Allison and Ms. Weaver on yesterday, showing the letter that was sent to Senator Davis, and just another letter that we had a meeting to reprimand a superintendent, which did not happen. So I'm just letting you know that we, some of us did do our judiciary duties in trying to get to the point of asking for help so we would not be to the point that we are at now. So I'm just asking that you please sympathize with us and help us out on this. Thank you.
Angela Bonaparte. That's close enough.
I am Angela Bonaparte. I serve as District 9 for Jasper County Board. I'm the newest board member of this board. I've heard the old members talk about how dysfunctional the board is, but I can tell you, I look into the heart of the board and not individuals. When coming onto this board, you teach yourself. It's not something that's given to you. You don't have a instruction on what to do. You learn You learn things on your own. And as me coming into this Board, I'm learning things. I've seen where they said the state took over the finance, where they should. The should, and then that's good. I do feel that this Board can go forth, go forth, under the leadership, the Board, the state supervising us. I feel that if some of the members want to leave, go. Let this Board grow. Let this Board stay in the community and go out and help these kids. I work for Beaufort County School District. I can tell you, in 2014, I fought the School Board for the kid, for my son. And I'm willing to, being that I'm on this Board for Jasper County, I'm willing to fight for these kids that's in Jasper County, not just for my district, because I serve for a community, but for Jasper County kids. I appreciate the state. I appreciate this time that you're giving me to voice my opinion. Yes, come in, show us what's right, but please don't take this Board, because I'm new, and I'm willing to fight for what's right for these children, to see this Board go far.
Thank you, Angela. The next person I'm having difficult, is there Gary? Veldron?
It looks like he scratched his name out.
Did you scratch your name out from Jasper?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay. E. Todd Moyer?
Ted Moid.
Moid, all right, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you.
State Board, thanks for having us today. My name is Ted Moid. I'm a nonprofit developer in Jasper County to help low-to-moderate income citizens with home issues. My wife and I run as a nonprofit that helps low-to-moderate income citizens become homeowners with home issues, down payment assistance. And so, we had a baby daughter while we was running the business. And so she was always, we developed properties and low-income properties. And so she was always around us with the low-income kids, communicating, playing, and everything. And so when we'd get home at night, you know, we would talk about the day, what happened, transpired. And so, a couple of times, she heard some conversations she shouldn't have heard. And she came up to us and she says, Mom, Dad, do you guys think that you are better than those people that you serve? You sound like that's what you're saying. And I said, absolutely not. I said, you are just blessed to have two parents that comes home with you every day, fix dinner, take care of you, make sure that you get the necessities of life. Those kids that you communicate with every day, they would seek the same thing, but they don't have the same opportunity. So she said, well, if they don't, she said, why don't you run for the School Board and give them that opportunity? So here it is, 14 years later, I've been laboring, trying to make Jasper one of the best school districts in the state. I am a product of the Beaufort County School District next door. So when I moved to Jasper, it was really a little bit different from what I was used to in Beaufort County. I know they had some challenges and some issues. And some elders in the community came to me and says, we appreciate you running. You help with home repairs. You help with all the home issues. Home, housing, and education goes together. If a child is living in poverty, the first thing they're worrying about where the next meal is coming from, okay? They want to know that they're going to have something to eat. They want to know that they're going to have some place over their head where they can live. Well, in Jasper, those are opportunities that afforded, but not very well afforded. And so these kids are struggling. They are doing the best. These are great students. These students wants to be just like you guys, you know? The one day, they want to sit exactly where you are so they can give back to their community. But if you come in and do our district what you said you're going to do, you're not helping us, you're not helping the children, you're not helping the community. What my thoughts are, is go back to the community. We don't have any really business partners in Jasper County. We are a low-income county. We don't have business partners, and the few that we have are limited. In Beaufort County, they have over, how many business partners? We can't teach the kids if they don't know where they are going, what job they're going to be looking for, if the employee is going to come and say, well, when you get through with a program, here's a pipeline, we are ready for you. Give us that opportunity. We are growing. We just passed $130 million referendum. We don't take that for granted. We really don't. I mean, this is our opportunity to shine, and we don't want anyone, the state or anyone local, to stop our progress for these kids. We have worked this hard so far, and we will work hard further. And like Mr. Ballyett say, my term is up next year. I've done 14 years. I think I've done more for these kids than the rest of the Board. So I am not running in the next election. So I'm trying to get everything accomplished in these last year and a half that I have committed to these children. And that's all I ask. Just give me a chance to finish my home run. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jamie Gregory with our South Carolina Association of School Librarians. Good afternoon, Jamie.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Gregory, and I currently work as a school librarian in South Carolina. My first day is Thursday, so I will accept any and all prayers. I am beginning my 21st year as an educator in the state. My children were part of the public school system in South Carolina, and I myself am a graduate of a South Carolina public school. And I am also a past president of the South Carolina Association of School Librarians. I'm here today to address concerns related to Regulation 43-170. As we begin a new school year, school librarians and classroom teachers remain hopeful that this Board will consider amending the regulation or repealing it entirely. Last year, during the first year of this regulation's implementation, school districts across the state decided to remove large numbers of books preemptively, just in case anything were to violate the regulation. One Spartanburg County School District's high school English department did not order any new novels to be taught in classrooms because of worry and confusion about the Last February, district officials in Berkeley County blocked access to databases provided by the South Carolina State Library from all students in the district, which still hasn't been resolved, even though they've gone back. Information recently released from a FOIA request indicates a variety of reasons have been suggested to justify this action, including a concern that information can be found in the databases, which violates obscenity law. Also, one person posted a comment on Facebook alleging that inappropriate content could be found in these databases. However, none of this information has been shared with the district or parents, nor have state library professionals been consulted, as we can see through the FOIA request. District officials even suggested that open web sources would be safer for student use than databases, displaying an egregious lack of pedagogical discernment, which is frankly disturbing. I think we can all agree that none of these actions benefit students' academic achievement in South Carolina. However, educators are simply trying to comply with the actions of this Board, which has required a considerable amount of guesswork, as some books are retained or restricted, which do contain sexual content that the regulation purportedly bans. There is even more confusion now, after this Board notified Beaufort County that the district should take charge of more book challenges that were submitted to the State Board. To quote, "This Board said that it is time for Beaufort County to resume the lead in reviewing complaints." However, your letter does not acknowledge that Beaufort County already did review those same books, which have been challenged again at considerable time and cost to this individual district. This situation provides a wonderful opportunity to remind you all of the manufactured need for this regulation. Just because local school districts followed their own collection development policies doesn't mean they were confusing or that they eliminated parents' rights. What it meant was that through a democratic process, Beaufort County reviewed 97 books, and a small group of people simply didn't like that the review committees voted to retain 92 of them. So in response, you all as a Board were told that there was so much confusion, and schools were being overrun with sexually explicit materials to warrant a statewide takeover of instructional materials fueled by a specific and well-documented political agenda, and the complaints of only two parents in this entire state. Those of us who oppose the regulation are frequently accused of crimes, such as pedophilia or distributing porn to minors. Why, if you oppose the removal of sexually explicit books, then that must mean you are in favor of giving small children sexually explicit materials. However, based on the specific examples I just described, you can see that this regulation is misguided and is inhibiting the abilities of South Carolina educators to provide students with the educational opportunities they need to develop world-class skills in communication, information, media, and technology as our profile of the high school graduate states. I encourage all of you to use your leadership positions to thank classroom teachers and school librarians as the new school year begins. This regulation does not have to be something that creates division. We can have conversations with each other and with community members about concerns related to instructional materials. And we can do so without violating the constitutional rights of students and parents and without defaming school librarians. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Thank all of you who appeared before us today. This time, we will go to our committees, beginning with Policy and Legislative Committee. The Policy and Legislation Committee met and heard three items for approval and no items for information. For approval, we heard the School District Five of Lexington and Richmond Counties, Irma High, a waiver request related to a student participating in interdisciplinary activities. And then we had a request for approval of property disposal, Lexington County School District Two, an area on 365 SAC Gothard Road in Casey, and Lexington County Two, Property Two on Hinbet Drive in West Columbia. At this time, the report stands as a motion made by the committee.
Did you approve them all?
Yes, yes. The report stands as a motion made from the committee. It does not require a second. Is there any discussion concerning these? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. Now we move to our Education Professions Committee Report. Joette Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. The Education Professions Committee met this morning and approved four action items. One, the retired educator certificate guidelines for 2025. Two, an adoption of basic skills assessment for paraeducators. Three, new alternative route program in Aiken Alternative Licensor for Teachers. They're calling it Aiken Alt. And four, national accreditation decisions for Morris College and the University of South Carolina Columbia. These action items were approved and placed on the consent agenda. There was one item heard for information that was concerning Professional Review Committee, the PRC of the provider and the program updates. It was rather lengthy, but we can give you more information if you need it.
Very good. This report stands as a motion made for the committee. It does not require a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. Now we move to Standards, Learning, and Accountability Committee Report, and I recognize Ms. Lynn.
Thank you. The Standards, Learning, and Accountability Committee met and heard one action item. Report of recommendations from the 2024 Instructional Materials Review Panels for Computer Education Courses. The actions items were approved and moved to the consent agenda. The committee did not hear any information items. Thank you.
Okay. That report stands as a motion made by this committee. It does not require a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. Instructional Materials Review Committee Report. I believe you all had no report.
We do not have a report. We have not met since our last meeting.
Okay. Our Educator-Licensor Committee Report. I recognize Ms. Kreminger to present that Educator-Licensor Committee Report.
Thank you, Chair Allison. The Educator-Licensor Committee heard 11 cases today. We approved one and denied one initial certification. We approved three public reprimands, six suspensions. These matters were ratified by the full Board. And a special thanks to Dr. Mathis and Ms. Allison for graciously stepping in on our committee at the last minute. And of course, a special thanks to Ms. Berg and Mr. Gunter for all that you do to prepare all the information to us before we meet. Thank you.
And additionally, the full Board ratified all the actions taken by the ELC committee. Moves to our Full Board Education-Licensor Committee Report. The Full Board-Licensor Committee met and heard three cases today, resulting in one approval for initial certification, one order of suspension, and one order of permanent revocation. And additionally, the full Board ratified all the actions taken by the ELC. And the Full Board ELC met solely for the limited purpose of ratifying the actions of Okay, I will clarify that we did have three Full Board Educator-Licensors. Thank you, Mr. Gunter. And one of those was approval for initial certification. One was an order of dismissal, and the other was an order of permanent revocation. Thank you very much. It's always great to have somebody to follow up and keep you straight on the agenda. Okay. And I have moved on to the Full Board ELC met solely for the limited purpose of ratifying the actions of the ELC. All actions taken by the ELC committee was ratified by our full Board. Which brings us to, all committee items presented to the State Board for approval make up this consent agenda that we have. The consent agenda has been distributed to all of you. Is there a motion to approve?
Kreminger, so moved.
Kreminger made the motion. Is there a second?
Mathis, second.
Mathis, seconds. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the like sign. Motion carries. Okay, the South Carolina Board of Education Report for Approval, State of Education Emergency Declaration of Jasper County School District pursuant to 59-18-1640. And I believe I recognize Ashley Story with white in story outside counsel to bring that forth to us. Thank you.
Chair, Board Member Superintendent Weaver. On behalf of the Superintendent and the Department, we are here today for the children of Jasper County School District and the community. Superintendent Weaver requests that, in accordance with South Carolina Code 59-18-1640A4, you approve her recommendation to declare a state of emergency in Jasper County School District due to its classification as state of fiscal emergency at this time. This decision, while extraordinary, is not meant to be punitive. Rather, its purpose is to bring the district into compliance with its fiduciary duty to its children and the taxpayers of Jasper County. Ultimately, it's the children that we serve, and as we review the legal implications of what we are asking you to do today, I ask that you consider their best interests. As a threshold matter... As a threshold matter, the Department of Education took every possible step to mitigate the financial concerns before seeking this measure. Pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 59-20-90, the Jasper County School District was first placed on fiscal watch, then fiscal caution, and later, this board, the State Department of Education Board, approved the elevation to fiscal emergency on December 3, 2024. Those designations were not appealed. So we're going to walk through some of the legalese here. I'll try to make this as reader and user-friendly as I possibly can. You all may be aware that there is a new statute that took effect in July of 2022, and that is the statute I cited to you earlier, 59-18-1640, which provides that this State Board may approve a recommendation of the superintendent to seek a declaration of emergency over a school district for a different number of measures, and we'll get into that in a moment. This is a case of first impression under this statute, and what that means is this is the first time this board has heard this type of issue since the proviso was no longer in effect, and we have the statute, okay? So this is the first time you all will be hearing it, and so we're going to go through some of the different legal measures in a moment. I just wanted to touch on the basis of when we look at the statute, and we'll put it on the next slide for you, then we talk about the different reasons for why the State Board may take the action that the superintendent is requesting that it take, that we have to look at the plain language of the statute. And we believe that in reviewing the statute, that the plain language is clear, is not open for interpretation, that our legislature said exactly what it meant to say in that statute. So this is the statute here on this slide, and if you will note, it says that the superintendent, pending your approval, may declare a state of education emergency in a school district under certain circumstances. There are four listed here. The one that we are talking about today is the fourth one, and that is if the district is classified as being in a state of fiscal emergency, which Jasper County School District was previously at your designation as of December 3 of last year. If you all make this approval today, then the State Superintendent will assume the management of the district and all schools within the district immediately. This tracks some of the similar language from the previous proviso. You all had some of these issues occur in previous years under other school districts. And if you'll note, if you look there in sort of that fourth and third and fourth bullet point, it talks about the financial issues a district may be experiencing. So our current statute tracks very similar languages to what you all maybe used to be seeing. But again, we are looking at the current statute. We are not operating under proviso anymore, which is why this is coming before the State Board of Education, because you all are now required to approve that designation. So just to give you a timeline of events here briefly, and we will not go through everything ad nauseam. I know that you all have seen some of the information that's been put out into the public domain, both from the State Inspector General's Office and other items. Did want to go over some things here that I think are useful for the public to understand, and some of this was mentioned earlier in the meeting. But going back to 2018, Jasper County School District hired former Superintendent Dr. Anderson. Thereafter, she received a public reprimand by this State Board in January of 2021. It was noted that the district changed its financial management system in the middle of the fiscal year, and around that same time, the Department of Education's Office of Auditing Services began conducting an audit in that school district. There was a report that was offered by the OAS in May 18 of 2021 that detailed some of the negative findings, specifically with regard to procurement and spending, and that was noted in the State Inspector General's report as well. In September of 2022, there was a change in leadership with the CFO at the school district, and that individual was replaced. In November of 2022, there began a Cognia Engagement Diagnostic Review of Jasper County School District, and it was worth noting in the SIG report that you all may have reviewed already, that Dr. Anderson was currently working for Cognia at the time that the district was undergoing the Cognia accreditation process. And just to remind you all and the public there, two methods of accreditation that you all have set forth, it can be done through the Department of Education or through Cognia as an approved partner, okay? To go on here, I want to highlight, we already discussed this, that in February 29 of 2024, the Jasper County School District was elevated to fiscal caution because it failed to submit timely its 22-23 audit and implement its financial recovery plan. That elevation was taken to fiscal emergency by the department in August of '24, and this board approved that designation in December 3 of '24. So at this point, the superintendent and the department have done every small measure that they could to bring us to this point, because it's regretful. I don't think that if I speak for Superintendent Weaver, and she certainly could speak for the department, that we don't want to have to be here doing this today. If we could do everything again, we would try to start off where we did, giving a smaller measure and increasing it as necessary, and this is where we landed. And then, of course, we all know that the State Inspector General produced a report just most recently in July of this year, which listed a number of issues that it identified with regard to the school district. And basically, the ultimate finding there is that the district still remains in fiscal emergency with no foreseeable path to self-correction, and that is what brings us here today before the board. To highlight a few of the SIG report findings, and this is all public information, it's posted on the SIG's website, that the SIG identified financial mismanagement by the leadership, but also poor oversight by the board when it investigated the issues that were brought before it. We've already mentioned the Cognia accreditation process. The SIG believed that Dr. Anderson's employment with Cognia raised serious conflicts of interest with regard to its measures there, and I do understand that the State Department is undergoing some review of that as well, just to ensure that the district doesn't lose accreditation or that there aren't issues with that because of this potential conflict of interest. There are also some findings relating to Dr. Anderson as the superintendent, relating to her employment agreement and her pursuit of personal business ventures during the time that she was employed with the school district. And just to make this clear, because I think sometimes people have questions about who reports to whom, obviously, the superintendent of any school district reports to the board. And oftentimes, you sometimes ask, well, who is the board's employee? It's the superintendent. The superintendent oversees the other employees of the school district, but the board oversees the superintendent. It is also, there was also some concern about whether or not the school district's board was aware of some of this misconduct and whether it failed to report it to the appropriate law enforcement officials before SIG came in to investigate at the county recently. And in kind of conclusion there, that the board members did not act when they knew that they were violations of their own policies. So these were some of the findings by the SIG. Just to kind of summarize for you all where we are today, without belaboring it, the district failed to submit a 2023 audit, which requires a significant expenditure of taxpayer resources and workforce to untangle and manage this financial documentation. So right now, the department is there, boots on the ground, trying to help work through this. It is going to take some time and understanding to get through those things, and I believe that the department is committed to working with the community and the stakeholders there to make sure that it is doing everything it possibly can to bring the district into compliance with this fiscal audits that are required by year. There are also some major issues with the district's travel-related expenditures relating to overseas recruiting and other travel-related ventures. This was referenced in the SIG report. I believe and understand that initially, it was some of this travel that caused the SIG to go in, but there were other issues that were uncovered, and so there was not a bulk of information about this in the report. But I do believe the department is still working through these issues as we speak. Again, the district failed to timely submit its fiscal report audits for '21, '22, and '22, '23 despite being placed first on fiscal watch, then on fiscal caution, and then on fiscal emergency. And those are part of the financial-related matters that bring us here today. There are other issues relating to the organization of the financial records, the district's inability to be able to hire and retain a fully functional financial department with experienced staff, its failure to comply with its own procurement code and regulations, which was uncovered as early as 2022, so three years ago, making questionable payments to certain employees, which may have included bonuses and/or dual employment payments, the continued employment relationship with Dr. Anderson, and the costliness of her separation to the district. Of course, she is no longer there, and her separation and the terms thereof are made public for you all to know about. And we believe the department's position is that each of these findings individually contribute to the district's placement and current status on fiscal emergency. But all of these things together, if you didn't look at them individually, require that the department at this point, it cannot be derelict in its duty to monitor this and to take care of the children, the community, and Jasper County. And so even if we just take all of it together, that is more than enough under what the statute requires for you all to declare a state of emergency in the county. So in conclusion, before I take any questions, again, this is an extraordinary measure. We are very serious about this. It's not something that I think anybody has any joy in bringing to the table. It is one of the last stops. It is the last stop. As I said before, you all had already approved the fiscal emergency designation. Prior to that, it started off at the lowest level, at fiscal watch, and then fiscal caution before we got here today. And there has just been no meaningful transformation by the district. And I don't mean to say that, that they don't want to, okay? I think it's important, I think you heard earlier too, and I take those individuals at their word, that they've really tried, that they wanted to. But at this time, it's got to be done for these children, and the statute would require at this point that approval. Again, the fiscal emergency designation alone, under Code Section 59-18-1640 Subsection Four, allows you all to approve this designation based on the current financial status. There is plenty of information in the record. We've already gone over some of the highlights, and I encourage you all and the public to read through those reports. We believe truly that the department and Superintendent Weaver, if this does not happen, we would be derelict in our duty in supporting that community and those children. And that's really why we're here, to make sure that they feel supported, that they have the community supports in place and working to partner with the department, which is a resource. You know, I don't think the department takes the position that it wants to be running any school district in South Carolina. And so, you know, I think it's really important to know, and for the community to know, that if you all do approve this declaration today, that the department is going to work very, very closely with the community and the stakeholders, the children, the students, the employees, anyone there who wants to help and provide input. I think the department is definitely committed to doing that after today, if this is what you all decide to do. So we are asking that you all approve this takeover under the South Carolina law today. I did want to just make note, I understand that some local elected officials have sent communication that they support this declaration, those being the communities of Hardyville and Ridgeland and the county council. And so I think that that is important for you as you are kind of making this decision and deliberating it today. I would just say that in conclusion, that Superintendent Weaver asked that you declare a state of emergency in Jasper County School District due to its classification as being in a state of fiscal emergency already. Again, I remind you that this board has already approved the department's request to oversee the district's finances, as is currently designated in a state of fiscal emergency in accordance with the Code of Laws 59-20-90. Therefore, the requirement outlined by our legislature under South Carolina Code 59-18-1640A4 is already satisfied, that being that the district is classified as being in a state of fiscal emergency, warranting your approval in this matter. It is our position again, that the department and Superintendent Weaver would be derelict in their duties to protect the children and taxpayers of the county if no action was taken under these circumstances. The department has provided support and assistance without material change, despite efforts made by some. As the late Dr. King said, the time is always right to do what is right. Therefore, we are asking that you approve this declaration today. I will take any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Ms. Story. Does the board have any questions?
Of course I do.
Ms. Story. Yes, Dr. Hanley.
Ms. Story. So reading through the Inspector General's report, one of the things that kept bothering me, and maybe I'm misunderstanding it, and maybe you can help me with this, but it looks to me, even though the 2022 and '23 fiscal reports were eventually turned in, even though they were late, there's not actually been a complete audit of the finances of this district since at least 2018 and maybe even before. There's procurement audit has not been done. There's, we have missing financial documents from this district for at least six years, possibly longer, the inspector general did not address that.
That's correct. That's absolutely correct. And I think that's one of the issues, is that the department is there now, providing support, boots on the ground to try to rectify that. It's going to take time. It's not going to happen overnight. And because it's been so long in coming, that this is why this extraordinary measure is required at this point.
And we heard from board members that they were trying to rectify things. Do we have meeting minutes, or do we have notifications from board members that went to the superintendent or to the cabinet of the local district that said, hey, listen, you need to do your homework, and I want to see it?
I don't have that specific information. What I can tell you is that, of course, all of the district's board minutes would be required to be public in accordance with FOIA. And so, you know, I would take people at face value when they come up here to tell you all today that they requested help and assistance, and perhaps that did happen. But we're at a juncture here at a crossroads where, despite giving assistance, we're going to have to go in and completely overhaul this.
Asking for outside assistance is one thing, but requiring those people that work in the district to do what they're paid to do is a different thing.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Story, you used the word that we would not be carrying out the law on which we sit under unless we were to look at this with a magnifying glass and help people move forward. You referred to the fact that our children are at stake here. The parents who pay taxes, all the citizens of the area pay taxes. So we would be very derelict in our work if we didn't look at this with an intense eye to help people. You know, so often in these cases, I feel that people feel like, you know, they're being taken advantage of, or there's some discrimination or other things that go on. In this case, from what I'm hearing, it's nothing like that. It is a helpful handout to help people get things back working so that our children can be educated, our teachers can teach, and our people who are paying taxes for the educational system have a path forward and a very good path forward. That is what I hear from you when you talk about a takeover to help. It's a handout to help.
Yes, ma'am. And just to reiterate too, we're talking about financial viability and stability. And, you know, it's one thing, it's very important to educate our children, talk about curriculum and achievement. You can't have that if you don't have management of the finances. And if that goes to the wayside, there would be no way to move those children forward. I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So Ashley, could you give us just a brief timeline? If, should the board approve this request? What next?
So immediately, the takeover would be effective immediately, starting tomorrow, or really as soon as you all approve this. The school board, the local school board at this point, would have the ability to appeal this to the Administrative Law Court. It has 10 days to do that. But there is no stay of the takeover if the board does do that. So the department would go in and immediately begin working. From a long perspective, this is a six-year process. It's not a quick process. It's going to take time to get in and figure out what the department can do to support the individuals in the community, the students, the teachers, the staff. So we can kind of break it down into two major sections, the first three years and then the second three years, if you will. So the department will work during that first three years to really get in, try to figure out what's going on, provide support, meet with the community, get together and understand what we can do to assist. There would be some timeframe during those three years, toward the end of the first three years, where there would be some probably appointment of board members as selected by local individuals, and of course, with the department's input as well. And then eventually, the goal is to restore the district back to the place that it is, where you've got fully elected board members of the public by the end of that six-year period. So again, you know, I understand the stress of potentially feeling like you're losing an elected official, but I think if I know the department and what it wants to do here, it's trying to work together so that people are not going to lose their voice in this. And so, yes, it's a long process, but it takes time. You can't make change overnight. I think even sometimes superintendents, when they're interviewing with school boards, they say, I need several years to turn it around. And they truly do. When you're dealing with a lot of different things that are going on, it does take time. It can't happen overnight.
Dr. Mathis, if I could piggyback on that, I just wanted to share that, you know, in addition to the financial assistance that we are now offering to the district, over the last two years, the Department of Education, through our Office of Transformation, has been very, very involved in instructional coaching in the district. And so we, as was referenced earlier, have been very encouraged to see that there has been a lot of hard work going on in the classrooms in Jasper County and that- been a lot of hard work going on in the classrooms in Jasper County, and that, as has been referenced, we believe in the children of Jasper County, and that those children can learn, and they are learning. But we believe that by stabilizing the leadership of the district, by building new, more robust partnerships with businesses, faith communities within the district, that we can accelerate that learning rapidly by stabilizing the financial operations of the district.
And Madam Chair, just to comment.
Yes.
A statement that was made earlier today by Milliken Winter, just keeps going over and over in my head, "We know too much to fail too many."
Any other discussion or questions from the board? If not, is there a motion to approve the approval of the State of Education Emergency Declaration of Jasper County School District pursuant to South Carolina Code 5-18-1640?
Madam Chair, I move that the State Board of Education grant the State of Education Emergency of Jasper County School District pursuant to South Carolina Code 59-18-1640.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mathis. Is there a second?
Hanley, second.
Hanley, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Motion carries. Moving on to our model policy for school board live streaming, we recognize Philip Sees, our Director of Governmental Affairs.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Weaver, Chair Allison, and members of the State Board. I'm before you today to bring two items that are here because of either recently passed legislation or a change in proviso. The first item before you is the model policy requiring live streaming of school board meetings. This is before you today because of Act 28, which passed this year, and it requires all school governing bodies to livestream their meetings. We worked with stakeholders in this space to take their feedback and concern, so the document before you today addressed those. The way this will work is set out in law, is y'all will adopt a policy with certain requirements set out in code, and then at a minimum, the local governing bodies, which includes school district boards and charter school boards, will adopt, at a minimum, the policy that you hopefully adopt today. There are four sections in this model policy. The first section is applicability. One of the questions we got in developing this section was, how far down the chain does this go? Are PTO meetings required to be streamed under this? And looking at the legislative intent, that is not the case. We've outlined kind of the basic meetings that need to be streamed. Those are regular and special call meetings of the local school board or governing body, committee and subcommittee meetings, budget workshops and hearings, and then public hearings. The school boards can choose to go further than that, but at the bare minimum, that's what should be streamed. In section two, which is policy implementation, that covers the mechanics of what needs, or how it needs to be streamed, when and where the link for the stream needs to be posted, and the recording of the meeting, when and where that is required to be posted, along with some guidance. In section three, it talks about access to broadband. Over the past decade and some change, South Carolina has spent hundreds of millions of dollars for broadband access. There are a few, but very limited pockets of the state that don't have access to broadband. Section three is in there in case. For some reason, there is a school district office, which is unlikely, but theoretically possible, that may not have broadband. This allows them another year to figure out how to either get broadband or high-speed internet access to their district office. That request for a 12-month extension would come before the P and L Committee of the State Board. And then finally, section four is noncompliance, and this is what happens if a school board or governing body does not follow the model policy. And it's a tiered system. The first tier is technical guidance from the Department of, here's how you set it up, here's how you can get streaming set up. The subsequent offenses can range anywhere from warnings to you have to provide a document of a plan of how you could come into compliance, all the way to referral to the State Board for fiscal penalties, up to, I believe, 1% of the state funds to the district. So that is the model policy for live streaming.
Okay, do we have questions from the board, from Mr. Sees?
Do we have an idea how many districts are not live streaming? Because I know, should be by now, a lot of them are doing it.
Right, that was asked, and I don't believe there ever was a number given during the legislative process. I mean, looking at the map of where broadband is in South Carolina on the ORS website, those areas are indicated in white, and there are very few white areas. So I would imagine that the number is very slim, if any. But there was a concern that there could be one, and so that is the reason why section four, yeah, section three, excuse me, is put in there.
Any other questions of Mr. Sees?
I just have a comment, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad you put in there that it has to be visible and audible, because I've listened to some of these board meetings, and you can see they're meeting, but the loud noises and the other distractions, they're not audible. And there are a lot of people that cannot attend the board meetings for time constraints or the size of the meeting place. So thank you for putting that in.
Yes.
Other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Richardson, I make a motion, we approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Creminger, second.
Creminger. And I believe we now have a, Dr. Hanley?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to offer an amendment to this model policy. Under section three B, we all know that there's a difference between not having access and not trying to get access. And so, as a clarification, I would like to offer the following amendment. I would like to strike, if a district governing body provides evidence of limited or no access, they strike that part, and instead add, upon showing a reasonable effort to comply with the requirement, a district's governing body with evidence of limited or no broadband access. That basically gives them, they need to provide some evidence that they have tried. And we all know that there are at least two satellite providers, and so if you don't like the politics of one of them, pick the other, and that's fine.
Okay, you have heard the amendment to the policy? Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second, Mathis.
Okay, Mathis says, are there any questions? Any comments? Everybody understands, and you have the language in front of you, okay? We are now going to vote on the amendment. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Okay, that has, that third access to broadband has been amended, and now we're going to vote on the bill model policy as amended. All those in favor, do I have a motion?
We already had the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. The motion carries and as amended. Okay, we'll now have updates to model policy for unencumbered time. School nurses, and Philip, you've got that one too.
Yes, ma'am. So proviso 1.105 in this year's budget was amended from proviso 1.111 in last year's budget. The 1.111 proviso requested that school districts were applicable, include school nurses in their unencumbered time policy. This year, the legislature updated that proviso to require that school districts include school nurses in their unencumbered time policy. So what is before you today is an amendment to the policy you adopted in January of 2023. And all it does is simply add school nurses into the model policy, and includes where, if there's a medical emergency, a school nurse's unencumbered time may be withheld or reduced. Just some background here, once this model policy is passed, school districts have 30 days to enact it. We also consulted with stakeholders in this to address any concerns, and along with stakeholders consulted with our school nurse consultant at the department, and everybody is fine with this language.
Okay, you heard the updates on the model policy. Is there any questions? Any discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
Creminger, Madam Chair.
A second?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Thank you, Philip.
Thank you.
Very much. Y'all are so quiet today. What happened to you? Especially Mr. Richardson. For information, we have an academic update. Dr. Abby Dugans, she's our Deputy Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer.
Thank you, Chairlady Allison and members of the board. I look forward to providing academic updates every month to this board. Chairlady Allison, you did such a great job reminding us of the start of the school year. Just this morning, I dropped my own newly minted seventh grader off at Batesburg Lee Full Middle School, and so he allowed me one picture, a quick one, that I'm not allowed to put on Instagram.
I'm surprised at that. Most of the time, they don't.
Absolutely. And then on my commute in, I had a great conversation with one of our district instructional leaders, who had just spent 45 minutes in the rain greeting new 4K students into her district. And she said, I'm not sure if the drops on my shoulders were teardrops from the mamas or raindrops from the sky, but it's just such a great reminder of why we are all here doing this work as school gets kicked off. So, you know, especially as the year gets rolling, I know that my academic updates will be more and more robust, but as we gear up for the new school year, I want to remind you of the work that our State Department has done in the area of literacy. Since about 2019, you've heard frequent updates on the Palmetto Literacy Project that just last year rolled out statewide. Palmetto Literacy Project took a tiered approach to the work that we rolled out into our schools. Our Tier Three schools received weekly on-the-ground support from literacy specialists here from the state agency. Teachers engaged in really high-quality professional learning that has just really changed the trajectory for the youngest readers in our schools. In 2024, the work of PLP impacted all districts as the remaining elementary schools engaged in letters, professional learning on the science of reading. Our teachers wrapped up Volume One last year, and are starting Volume Two this year, so we're excited to see the impact of that work. We will not waver on that laser focus in the literacy realm, but we are also really excited to roll out our new Palmetto Math Project, that is really modeled after the structure and the success of Palmetto Literacy Project. Just this spring, we had five math specialists pilot in 10 high-needs schools, upper elementary and middle school, where the data really shows our math teachers need some support and some really intentional professional learning in that math space. And so we are really excited that the Palmetto Math Project, over the summer, has built out that team. It now consists of 16 math specialists that have been engaging in professional learning together, and we are rolling out the same tiered support in that math space. Again, the focus will be in upper elementary and that middle school space. Our K3 teachers have been working real hard in literacy, so we're going to start with our elementary and middle schools in that math space. We have 79 Tier Two schools that will receive regional support from those math specialists, and 64 Tier Three schools, which will have the onsite, boots-on-the-ground support of our math specialists. So we're really excited about that work. I will, like I said, continue to provide updates throughout the year as that work rolls out. But I also would be remiss if I didn't mention the investment we've made in high-quality instructional materials. We are so grateful to the General Assembly's full funding of our instructional materials that fully align with our math and ELA standards that this board has approved in the recent years. Those new standards are really clearly aligned and articulated, and so when we think about aligning the support and the resources, we are well poised for an excellent school year in that space. So I will look forward to updating you, and I will take any questions that you might have about the academic work as we get ready for the school year.
Dr. Dugans, I would just make the comment that I think we probably take it for granted about the highly qualified or the instructional materials. The legislature providing the funds to align materials to our standards takes a lot of guesswork out for teachers.
It does.
To really provide intentional instruction, and you couldn't do that without the support, the financial support. So we talk about it, but I don't know that we fully appreciate how important that funding is for those materials.
Yes, and South Carolina is really lucky and unique in that support. So we are very grateful, and again, the State Department, we stand ready to help our schools, help our district leaders, help our teachers implement those materials with fidelity.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to have a comment.
Chair, I just have one, maybe two questions. One, where are we on the, you said we had, almost everybody hadn't finished a letters training at least, or taken their second year of letters training?
Yes, sir.
What is a measurement to show us this is working? What guidelines y'all use, and what guidelines will you be using for the math?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Harrington, for that question. You may remember that Superintendent Weaver, at the last meeting, shared the impact data that we are starting to see hit in that third-grade summative assessment. We know when we invest in building capacity in our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers, we would not see immediate impact on student growth, especially since our state summative begins in grade three. And so with our implementation beginning in 2019, 2020, we are now starting to see those kindergarten, first and second grade students move up through the upper elementary where the summative assessment begins, and so we are starting to see that growth.
And as part of that, the fact that we aren't going to promote a kid that's not qualifying?
Yes, sir. So our Read to Succeed legislation that was updated recently does speak to that as well. Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, just a big thank you for providing the standards, providing the professional development for the coaches, the math and literacy. I remember, a long time ago, my first year in a classroom, I had four textbooks and said, have a great year as a first-year teacher, with nothing to help. What, you know, where do I start? Do I teach these whole books? So thank you for providing, making sure that's provided to our teachers.
Thank you for that, Ms. Creminger. And, you know, we know that our teachers have such great knowledge, but we can always build into those toolboxes. And so as we think about building that capacity, it's, here is some learning on the foundational skills, here is some focus on numeracy. We've talked to teachers who have said, we've had great professional learning, but it may not have been specific to me as a middle school math teacher, for example. So thank you for that.
Just to build real quick on what Dr. Mathis was talking about, over and over and over again, we hear from teachers that there is so much uncertainty about, yes, as you said, Ms. Creminger, where do you even start with all of these standards and materials that you have been provided? And so I think that's one of the wonderful benefits of this entire HQIM movement, is that not only are they high-quality materials that are aligned to standards, but it just removes so much of that guesswork. And in my estimation, that's about respecting teachers' time, and really giving them back so much of that time that they're forced to spend unpacking standards or going out and curating curriculum that may or may not be of grade-level quality. So I just think it's a win-win-win for our teachers, for our students, and certainly for our state. So thank you for highlighting the General Assembly's partnership with that, Abby.
There are no other comments? Dr. Dugan, thank you so much for that presentation today. Jason Shoemaker, is Jason, there he is, our budget manager, the man with the money.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I know it's been a full agenda today, so I'll try and keep this as brief as possible, but I do want to give an update of how the board budget ended this past fiscal year. In front of you, you should have that standard budget and expense report, as well as the supporting pie charts. Within the board operations, one change that you may have already noticed was the introduction of the other personal services category. This section was added just to better reflect the broader range of personnel expenses that impacted the board's budget in the fourth quarter, beyond just the traditional per diem expenses. This includes payouts for accrued leave, as well as the addition of a time limit. This includes payouts for accrued leave, as well as the addition of a time-limited position to support Board operations. Year over year, the Board operations did see an increase in expenditures, but the bulk of the variance can really be explained by those additional personnel expenditures. Moving down into educator cases, the expenditures there remained pretty consistent year over year. The remaining balance there can really be explained by the unpredictability with the case volume and, but also ensures that there is available funding to support the need if it arises. Looking at the budget as a whole, though, we really don't see any areas that are of cause for concern. The Board maintained a disciplined spending approach with most categories aligning very closely with projections. The updates to personnel reporting reflect our ongoing commitment to transparency as well as adaptability. And with that said, I truly appreciate your time today, and we'll take any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Any questions of Mr. Shoemaker? Comments? It's always good to see that lined up very well. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Want to remind our members not to forget your travel forms. And I just want to say, this is, from what I heard from Thunder, it has been a very difficult day outside, so we want you to be very safe going home. And thank all of you for coming. Our media was not here when we started, but we thank the media. But thank all of you who come that have great concerns about our education system in the state. Let me tell you that I speak for the State Board in saying that we are very conscious of the education system in this state and the wonderful work of our State Department of Education and our Superintendent. We are here to support quality education, quality for not only those students that go through our system, but also the quality of our school board members, our superintendents, all who touch our young people in this state every day. And our feel is that if we work together, together we can build. Together is the only way. So as we go home, I hope you will feel that you are in that building and making sure that everything comes well with your State Department, your State Board of Education. Is there anything else that should come before this Board today? I want to thank all my Board members. And again, John, it's going to be difficult to get someone, is the next one going to have hair?
A lot more than me.
If there isn't anything else to come before the Board today, y'all be careful going home, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise.